Good evening and welcome to the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2010. Roll call.
Mayor Heidke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlee.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. It's our practice to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We have several visitors to the council chambers. I think some people are here to speak on some issues. We also have two special guests that I will introduce a little bit later. Actually, three special guests that I'll introduce a little bit later. And I want to add something to the agenda under 6A. I just want to make a couple comments about some of our police action recently in our community and ask the chief to also comment. At this point then, we'll take any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda from council members. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and it's been seconded to approve the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda includes the minutes of the last city council meeting on September 7th, the minutes of the Rice Hospital Board on September 8th, the planning commission minutes of September 8th, the minutes from the Municipal Utilities Commission of September 13th, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board minutes of August 10th, the Community Ed and Recreation Board minutes of August 27th, and an application from the local Knights of Columbus chapter for an exempt permit application. Councilmembers, do you have anything that you want to comment on or draw out from that consent agenda? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull the community ed and park minutes.
All right. Anything else? If not, those in favor of approving the rest of the consent agenda with the exclusion of community ed and recreation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's in regards to item number two, our smoking policy in parks.
All right. Want you to comment?
The board talked about changes to it last month. They'll be talking about it this Friday at 11:30 at their meeting at Jefferson School. But they want to make some changes to move the smoking distances away from Aquatic Center and the Civic Center and maybe some other public buildings. So I think we need to refer this to Public Works for next week after the board talks about it this Friday.
All right. So you want this added to the agenda for Public Works, Public Safety Committee next Tuesday?
Right.
Mick, you'll take care of that?
I don't know if Steve wants to add any comments.
No, just currently, the city has a policy in place for smoke-free in our parks during youth activities and the board has discussed expanding that to smoke-free grounds entirely, I guess.
For the entire park or whatever facility?
City facilities.
Does that include parking lots also?
I imagine that's a city facility, so that was a joint powers board recommendation, motion that was passed by the joint powers board.
So does it include parking lots?
Yes, sir.
Next to like aquatic centers and civic arenas?
Correct. City-owned facilities and spaces.
That should be a lively discussion. All right. Rick, that's been taken care of. Do you want to then?
I'm going to move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded to file the minutes from the Community Ed and Recreation Board for August 27th. Any other comments? Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering why, under the consent agenda, we call it the Community Ed and Rec Board, but yet, when we get to that page, it's called the Joint Powers Board. I mean, what is it?
Mick or Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I suppose technically, it's the Community Ed and Recreation Joint Powers Board. It's a, the title of the department is Community Ed and Rec. It's there because of a joint powers agreement with the school district. I'll have Mr. Brizendine change it.
I think we should call up what it is.
All right. Any other comments? If not, those in favor of approving that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We're down to 6A on the agenda and this community found out on the morning of September 16th that we'd had some pretty aggressive problems on September 15th, on the evening of the 15th that resulted in four young adults being arrested. And today, they were charged in court, but I did not hear anything about what charges. If I could ask our city attorney, Rich, did you hear anything about the charges today for those four individuals?
No, I did not. I was not there. I did not hear anything from the county attorney. Let me help.
Okay. I first of all, want to commend and thank the police officers who were involved and who responded to this call. This was a call in which there was some house invasion. There were actually two calls, one at about 4:00 PM and one about 6:30 PM. The end of the situation ended after the individuals ran away from the house with police chasing them, with all four individuals being caught within minutes of the house invasion. The unfortunate thing is that there were weapons involved and a police car was shot at and an officer was shot at. Thankfully, nobody was hurt or injured, either among our police officers or among the individuals who were caught. But I think it's important that the public understands that our police respond very efficiently and very swiftly to such a situation and that the individuals are under the care of the local law enforcement center. And we'll probably find out tomorrow what they were charged with today in court. But I think these are pretty aggressive situations and thanks for the police department for their quick action. Chief, do you want to add anything to those comments?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first of all, thank you for your kind words. I too share your sentiments on the officers that handled the situation. I'm extremely proud of them. When I think of what could have happened in a situation like this where they're being shot at or gunfire exchanged, that time of the evening, that location, First Street, busy area, the outcome could have been much different. Those guys literally did put their lives on the line for this community and for that, I'm proud and I'm also proud on how it ended. To address something a little further that I know might be on the minds of the public, it's been brought up that the southeast side has been plagued with a series of serious crimes and I just want the public to know that what we've been experiencing over there is not connected to one another. In other words, each of the events we've been handling recently are their own events. They're not connected to each other. So the drive-by shooting that we had a few weeks ago is not connected to this event from before, nor the stabbing that we had a few weeks prior to that. In all of the situations, we've had five, what I call major criminal offenses on the southeast side in the last month. Three of them are put to rest where we've had arrests and know who the perpetrators are. They are in jail. The fourth one, the victim of that assault, is not cooperating with the police and will not tell us anything. Plus, he had a warrant for his arrest. And the last one, although we know who did it, that person is not in town and we can't put that to rest until they are brought back to town or come back to town so we can arrest them. So the community at large is safe. This isn't an ongoing gang interrelated thing. This is individual and separate offenses and it's important that they note that the victims in each case were specific victims known to the assailants.
Thanks, Chief. Also, the reason the police were brought to the scene so quickly was due to the vigilance of a citizen who lived immediately in that neighborhood. I don't know who this person is, but I want to say thank you to the citizen who notified the police that there was something going on that was not right and that allowed the police to respond very quickly and very efficiently. So thanks to that citizen and I encourage all our citizens to call the police when any suspicious activity is going on. I also would like to have this item put on the agenda for the Public Safety and Public Works Committee in case there are council members or citizens who want to discuss this further. And Doug, if you would take care of that at your committee meeting. All right. Thank you very much. Now, we go on to a little bit lighter matter and this evening, we have the privilege of welcoming the Honorable Ardell Brady, who is the mayor of Rochester, Minnesota. And Ardell has been to this community before, usually for League of Minnesota City activities or training programs that are held here on behalf of the league. So he's familiar with Wilmer and this summer, Wilmer began to participate in the Northland or Northwoods?
Northwoods.
Northwoods Baseball Conference. And Ardell has a few words he'd like to say about that. The Wilmer Stingers and the Rochester Honkers played each other often and he'd like to comment about that. Welcome, Ardell.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here and thanks for the invitation to you, Mayor, and to the gentlemen on the council and to staff that's here as well. Yeah, this was kind of a spur-of-the-moment thing that I have valued the friendship that I have with Mayor Heidke and we were at a meeting somewhere early in the summer and I said, "We ought to have a bet on this." I know Wilmer's got the Jennie-O turkeys that are here nearby and we're the honkers, so obviously, we've got geese. And I was tempted to put one of them that had a bum wing in my trunk and bring it, but you did say I was honorable, so I'm trying to do that. But if you don't know, and actually, our newspaper on Saturday has the little headline on Sports Page, Rochester Mayor to Pay Off Northwoods Bet. So I lost a bet and now I have to make a trip, it says, to Wilmer to pay up. So here we are and the one good thing, I get to miss my own council meeting tonight so that I can take care of things there. But if you don't know, it was, I said, "Les, why don't we bet on who has the best overall record at the end of the season for our two teams?" Now, Rochester Honkers has been in the Northwoods League since the first year, 17 years, and I've been a season ticket holder and ultimately have moved down in our seating. So I do have front row seats that are perfect and most people think I got them because I'm the mayor and I said, "No, it's because I've been paying for them for 17 years, not just the eight that I've been mayor." But, so, we decided, and actually, I said at the time, there's a number of teams in the league that I know the mayors quite well, one being Duluth, where it's Don Ness up there, Alexandria, that's Dan Ness, Mankato, John Brady, no relation, certainly Wilmer, and even the Green Bay mayor, Jim Schmidt, James Schmidt, that's the mayor of Green Bay. But I thought, this friendship I've had with Les and we're proud of him being the second vice president of the National League of Cities, so I said, "We will bet." Well, I watched that very carefully. In the first half of the year, we won the first half of the northern division of the Northwoods League. And in fact, and obviously, we didn't win the second half, but we got into the playoffs and we did not win the overall between the north and south division, but we were the runner-up. But interestingly, we, as a team, lost about, well, not about, it was five games through rainouts that we were never able to pick up again up in Duluth. So that's, I'm crying a little bit about that, so we didn't have the same number of games. You guys were able to get all 70 of your games in. And the thing is, it went right down to the end and I was watching that and I thought, "Oh, man, here we go." You guys ended up with an overall record of 39 and 31 with a percentage of .557. We ended up with a record of 36 and 29 with a record then of .554. So it's three one-hundreds, three one-hundreds difference. Well, I said, "Okay, it's still, a deal is a deal. We better do it." And I then went and I thought, "Well, maybe there's something else I can look at," but it's still, we played each other's 10 times and I thought, "Maybe I have some, something that's good out of that." No, you guys beat us, seven out of 10. So we only won three of them. One of them was, the last one in Rochester, was on July 16th. And I brought the program so, Les, you can have the program of that particular game that we had and you can read what I said in here, not about that game, but for the season. So anyway, here we are and it's time to pay up. And so I've brought a couple props along that I do need to use and one of them, to get into the right... And I don't know if you've got one of these, but here's the jersey where mine says...
Oh, that's very nice.
So I wear this not every time, but there it is and I gotta put it stuck into my pants. But then inside here is this guy. It's the goose. And I've got it to share. I've told Les this already. Early in the summer, I asked one of our meat markets in town, I says, "You guys got geese that you have on hand?" And, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do that." Well, then, when it come time now for, to pay up, I called them and I stopped in and they said, "No, we have a hard time getting them, even at Christmas." And so I called another one of our meat markets and they thought they had two places to get them and they called the next day and said, "No, we don't have any either." That's when I really started thinking I was gonna bring one of those live ones from Silver Lake that we have. And then I called a Hy-Vee, which I probably should have called first. And they said, "Yeah, we've got some." So here it is. It's a free-range, all-natural, young goose. So I was thinking, "Do I say that I give you the bird?" I shouldn't say that. And you can make all kinds of jokes about giving someone a goose. But anyway, Les, here's the, here's the bird. And I'll present that to you. This is a 12 and 1/2 pounder. And I said, "I haven't got one a little smaller." Still frozen, so you can put it in somebody's freezer or your own and somebody will have a nice goose dinner from all of that.
That's great. Ardell?
There it is.
Thank you very, very much.
You can have the newspaper article and our program and we'll give you a note too.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Ardell, before you walk away, I have a little gift for you that you have to wear. This is the official Stingers batting helmet.
All right. Well, it does sort of sting to give you that.
Yeah. And I hope you'll wear it to at least one game at the honkers, Doug.
I probably will.
And you have to wear it here in the council chambers.
Okay.
Ardell made the long journey from Rochester to Wilmer tonight and he's heading back to Rochester again. And I too value the friendship that we've shared, Ardell, and look forward to, you know, more years ahead between us and when maybe I can get down to Rochester and enjoy a honkers game with you.
Do that, yes.
That'd be good. Well, thank you again very much and I know you're gonna pick up and leave, but thank you for the big effort to come here. So the public knows, I'll find a, an agency or a place here in the community that can utilize this. One of our nonprofit organizations will be the beneficiary of this. So thanks again, Ardell.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody here from the Stingers? I had called out there and invited somebody to show. I don't know if they did or not. I guess not. Okay. We're gonna move on. Number eight on the agenda. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing two very significant people in my life and who work in conjunction with our city. First is Don Borat, who is the executive director of the National League of Cities. Don works out of Washington, DC and is taking his time with the organization to come and visit Wilmer and talk a little bit about the National League of Cities. And with Don is Jim Miller, the executive director of the League of Minnesota Cities. And he also will have some things to say about the relationship between the city of Wilmer and the League of Minnesota Cities. So at this time, I would like to introduce and welcome Don Bort, executive director of the National League of Cities.
Can I just give these to you? Take it out. Let me start by saying that's a heck of a lot nicer introduction than the last time I met with a council where the mayor said, "You know, once every generation, someone comes along to head a national organization who's intelligent, articulate, and bright." While we're waiting, we have Don Borat. It is a pleasure for me to be here. One of the things I like to do is visit the communities of our officers and to come out and get a sense of what are some of the programs going on, to meet folks in the community so that I have an idea, a better understanding of what the issues are that communities are facing. And it's also a time for me to tell you a little bit about the National League of Cities. I'm not gonna go into a lot, but I thought I'd just give you a little bit of a framework. And then, the mayor asked me to just give my perspective on what's happening in Washington from the perspective of the National League of Cities. First of all, it's important to know that we are a bipartisan organization and indeed, I don't know what the political philosophies are of individuals. You know, it really is not relevant and indeed, we work across the political spectrum on issues. We find that, you know, there are times when we've got coalitions on one side of the aisle, other times, we're looking the other side. So we try to find, basically, what are the issues that are of most importance to cities and that's what we're about. Our focus is on the interests of cities. In brief, we were started back in the 1920s by 10 state leagues, including the Minnesota League. And the leagues were the ones that created us. And indeed, we are the child, not the parent, so we're sort of a bottoms-up organization. Through the leagues, we represent over 18,000 cities, towns, and villages and we have about 1,600 cities that belong directly. If you take the whole spectrum of communities in this country, you can see that the vast majority are small communities. And indeed, if you put Wilmer in that mix, you're one of the larger communities. You know, you might think of yourself as a smaller city, but in the whole mix of communities and cities in this country, this is, this is one of the larger ones in terms of the full mix. What we're about is really three things. One, to represent the interests of cities in Washington, that is to say, to lobby. And the focus is most often not about money. It's about making sure that the federal government doesn't do things to city. There are two things we don't want. We don't want unfunded federal mandates, which we like to refer to as shift-and-shaft federalism. This is where the federal government tells you to do something and they don't give you the money. And that is a no-no. The second thing we are opposed to is frankly, preemption. That's where the federal government will take away authority that otherwise belongs to cities. Let me give you a good example. There is right now, a bill pending that would require cities to engage in collective bargaining with police and fire. We're not taking any position on whether there should be collective bargaining. That's not the issue. The issue is that we don't believe that the federal government ought to be making a decision. That's a state and local decision. And we are fighting that aggressively. That's a really important issue. Give you another one. The Environmental Protection Agency has put together a set of regulations as it relates to stormwater that is a kind of one-size-fits-all. We are opposed to that and we are working very hard to make sure that that doesn't occur. We also want to make sure that there's an appreciation of some of the challenges that cities are facing today and we're working on that, particularly as it relates to job loss. Let me give you some quick numbers. In the next two years, municipalities are gonna lose between $55 and $85 billion. Municipalities in this country are gonna be laying off over a half a million people. And that means major, major cuts in services. Now, many cities like yours have done a lot in terms of improving efficiency and effectiveness, but they're also at a point where they're cutting. And when you start, and when you start cutting and ultimately get to the point where you have to lay off police and firefighters, you know you're really at a very tight point. And that, in fact, is what we're seeing in many communities today. Second thing we're about, so advocacy in Washington is one. And basically, how do we do it? We work through the leagues and we look to you folks. I have to say, just as an aside, I would think, and used to think, that mayors and council members were really good at being able to go up to Congress and represent the interests of their communities. And you get lobbied all the time, but you know, there are times when our own members go up there to talk to a member of Congress and the member essentially takes control of the discussion. Says, "I'm so glad that I was able to help you with this program." And all of a sudden, our folks turn to mush. And part of our role at the National League of Cities is to work with our own members so that when you go in and there's a clear ask, that ask might be, "Don't support that collective bargaining bill which takes away authority from cities." That's an important role that we play. All right. The second thing we do is to serve as a resource for cities. We do training, a wide range of training that's similar to, in some ways, what the Minnesota League does, but we try to do things that support them. But another thing that's really important, and this is really critical, is to find a way to share information from one city to another. And let me give you an example. Often, a community, let me use Wilmer, is doing things that you say, "Big deal, we're doing it." But in the context of what's going on in other cities, it can be enormously creative. Your work, for example, in the area of this inclusive initiative, what you're doing here has been shared with cities around this country. Les has had the opportunity to talk to groups that we've had. We've written it up. And in fact, we've gone so far as to share it with an international organization because many communities in other parts of the world are struggling with the same kind of issues we are. So the program that you have here, you probably don't even know it, has been shared through an organization we work with called United Cities and Local Governments so that they are able to share the work that you've done here. Again, I make the point that often, those in a community take for granted what you're doing. And you sort of say, "Well, you know, big deal." But the fact is, there are programs that many cities are doing that you can learn from one another. So part of what we're about is bringing folks together to share information and to share it in a way that's relevant, not pontificating, but frankly, it's the basic nuts-and-bolds programs that people are interested in. And we do it in a variety of ways, recognizing not everybody picks up information in the same way. Third thing we're about, and I think this is important, it is to be the advocate of the public sector and those who serve. Often, people will run for office, public supports them, then they get into office, people say, "Ah, you know, they're out for themselves." I mean, you've heard the negatives kinds of thing. Part of what we're about is to be, not to defend everybody, but to be able to say, "Look, those who are in public office are doing what they see from their perspective is the best that can be done for their community." They're trying. Most people wouldn't try. I'm fond of saying, and I say this all the time in a speech... I'm fond of saying, and I say this all the time in a speech, running for public office is an irrational and unnatural act. You let yourself get scrutinized more than an amoeba under a microscope for below-market pay, so people can call you night and day, and for what? To make decisions that are going to tick off just under half the folks in town. But the fact is, you do it. You're willing to do it. You're willing to serve. And somebody needs to be able to say, "This isn't bad. It's an important thing to be done." And so part of what we're about is to advocate and to share what is being done at the local level. In fact, when surveys are done on the public's attitude towards government, it's down across the board. But the public has a higher regard for those at the local level than at the state level and at the federal level. That's terrific, but it's still not very high. Les asked me to do something else. He asked me to give my perspective on what's happening in Washington. Let me just do it briefly. Now, you need to know I'm an optimist. I see the cream in a half-filled glass of milk. I mean, no matter how bad things are, you know, I like to see, I see them in the best possible light. I'm what might be called a prudent optimist. But I have to say, my optimism right now is being challenged pretty significantly. The climate in Washington is more polarized than I have ever seen it in my whole career. And I suspect it's a reflection of, you know, the anxiety, fear, and pain that's generated by this draconian economy, this terrible economy we have. And frankly, I think it's a natural tendency, when things are bad, to try and find somebody to blame. Somebody, somebody must be, you know, the cause of it. And my own view is, you know, at the moment, you know, a bit of humility and empathy would be helpful. Too many in Washington are sort of pontificating and defending their sense of certainty and importance. In the paper the other day, there was a quote from Secretary of Defense Gates, which I love. And let me just read it. "Washington is the only place where you can see a prominent person walking down Lover's Lane, holding his own hand." I mean, the sense of, you know, that I know everything there is. The fact is, we try and work across the board. And let me just make an observation. We work with an office in the White House, with both parties, whichever one is in the White House, called the Intergovernmental Office. Their job is to work with cities. The person that we work with there is the most responsive that I've worked with either under Bush or Clinton. And the thing that's the best, from my perspective, is that we can tell them when we disagree and not get shut out. To me, that's really important, to have an open door, both under President Bush and under President Clinton. If you disagreed, you really didn't have another opportunity to come back. And I think that's an important relationship. Now, we don't always agree, and we're letting them know when we don't agree. But I think it's important to be able to acknowledge that. What I also like to do is point out that Washington can learn a little bit from cities. I tried to get a story in the Wall Street Journal about two years ago. Two mayors, one a liberal Democrat, and I use the partisan, the mayor of Denver, Colorado, conservative Republican from St. Petersburg, Florida. If you looked at what each was doing in their community, you would have thought they were reversed. And the reason is, it's not about the politics or ideology, it's about what are the needs of the community. And what I appreciate at the local level is, local elected officials tend to look at their community in terms of, "What are our needs, and how can we best address them?" Now, right now, what we're trying to do is figure out how to work with this Congress. You know, the Democrats are split between what they call the liberal wing and the blue dog, more conservative. And I'm reminded of, I love this quote from Will Rogers. He said, "Democrats never agree on anything. That's why they're Democrats. If they agreed with each other, they'd be Republicans." Okay? The fact is, maybe right now, the Republicans are a little bit split, but generally, the Democrats, when they're in power, tend to, you know, have some real difficulty coming together. Regardless of what your politics are, sometimes you want to find that there's some kind of cohesion. What we're seeing now, though, is a very difficult time trying to get anything through. And we don't expect much will get through, if anything, before the election. That's too bad. On the other hand, the piece of legislation I mentioned with respect to the collective bargaining, that means it ain't going anywhere either. So in some ways, it's not so bad when they can't come together, because nothing bad happens. Nothing good will happen, but nothing bad is going to happen. So right now, this is a very tough time for our country, for cities. It'll be interesting to see what comes out after the election. Our job is to work across the board. Let me make one final observation. I'm grateful for this community, that we have your mayor as an officer of NLC. When someone becomes the president of the National League of Cities, they are the leader of America's cities. And the thing that's important to recognize is that we have presidents who come from large cities. We've had presidents who are council members. We have presidents who have been from mid-sized cities and small cities. But the point is, whoever becomes our president has been elected by local elected officials across the country. And this is something I think that's really significant, and something that I like to point out is a reflection of your own community. It's not just a reflection of the mayor who's serving, but really of the leadership of the city as a whole. And for that, I'm particularly grateful and appreciate the chance to be here. Now, Les had said, you know, be available for questions, and I'm open for anything that you might have.
Council members, if you have any questions or comments, you're free to ask at this Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming and reporting to us. I'm just curious as to what is the budget for the National League of Cities?
Twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million. And that comes from, how many cities did you say were involved? Sixteen?
Let me tell you where the revenues come from, because it comes from a number of sources. It's actually an important question. The dues are about 20%, 22%. We get revenues from conferences. We get grants, not from the federal government. We have a small project with the federal government on homeland security. But the vast majority of the grant money that we get comes from foundations. And much of the money from the foundations are dealing with issues around after-school program, gangs, dealing with gang issues, dealing with youth-at-risk kinds of programs, and those are funded by foundations. We also have a corporate partners program where we get revenue. And there are some enterprise programs, programs that provide services to cities that generate some money. Now, let me give you one example of one that you may be interested in that we don't make any money on. And that is what we call a prescription drug card program. Through CVS CareMark, and that's not CVS, they provide a card that is distributed by the city, and anybody in the city who does not have insurance can get a 20% discount in virtually, from virtually all pharmacies. We make nothing on it. But cities find that this is a way to help citizens. We host a child for, this is a city called Clarksville, West Virginia. They pay, I think, $3,000 in dues. Their citizens have saved over $100,000 to date. Another program we do is a buying service where a city can buy off a national contract if you want to. You don't have to pay to participate, and you can get generally better prices. But some communities prefer to only buy local, which is fine, but it's an option that we provide. So those are the sources of revenue that we have.
Due to the fact that you're receiving revenue from corporate partners and foundations, are you beholden to them more than the cities? Or, I mean, how do you, I'm sure that they have requests, and they need lobbying also. I mean, how do you distinguish that?
Okay. Well, let me tell you. One of the things that happened, there are many organizations that have corporate partners. We took three years to set up our program, because our board was concerned that there'd be a firewall between our program and our advocacy, because they didn't want essentially corporations to participate. And the companies that participate, and we reject some, by the way, because basically what they're trying to do is either sell directly or impact our lobby. And what we've done is made it clear that's not what it's about. And what we find is that we provide opportunities for elected officials to engage with folks from companies, to give them feedback on what it is that are issues of importance to them. And this has worked. We had one meeting when we were talking about technology, and we even gave the companies a chance to talk about what they do, and they said, "No, what we're trying to do is help you figure out what are the needs of cities. We're not going to do a sales pitch." So I think, Councilman, I think we've been able to put that barrier, because it's, you know, it's an obvious one, you know, there's a slippery slope. And I think we've been very good about that. And the measure is that we've rejected some companies, saying simply that this probably isn't the program for you.
I want to thank you again for coming out and reporting to us.
Thanks.
Thanks, Don.
Anyone else? Councilmember Amon?
Thank you for being here. Welcome to Wilmer.
Thanks.
Don, I just want to say I'm really pleased with participating in the organization the city has for years. And there is a lot of information, a lot of staff that can help you. I know you've helped us many times with the information that's available through your department. And it's great that we have you as a resource, and I appreciate your service. You know, you get a very short presentation, and it's hard to elaborate through the entire year what's happened, and I appreciate that. But could you give me something positive? As far as, you know, we talked about the negatives that's going on in Washington right now, but is there, you know, as far as collaboration, I look at it more or less as communication, collaboration with federal government. You know, I'm sure we're getting some things done, and I'm sure we're bucking against some representatives and some issues also, but can you give me some positive information?
Yeah. Well, first of all, let me start with what cities are doing. One of the things that cities are doing is, you've got to do a balanced budget, and you'll do whatever it takes to make sure the budget is balanced. And as I said, cities have done a lot in terms of improving efficiencies. At some point, though, they're having to cut into bone. And one of the challenges, I think, is to make sure that, you know, there is the benefit to the community as a whole. There are cities that have, for example, turned off streetlights. And those that can afford, have put money in to pay for them, but that means there are some areas of the city citizens can't. The same thing is true where cities have closed swimming pools. Some can afford to belong to a swimming pool, and others can't. So the bottom line is, cities are confronting those issues. What I can say, though, is that there are some programs that I think are and can be useful to cities. The whole stimulus, I know, is very political. The fact is that there have been monies that cities have used, particularly in infrastructure and transportation. And it seems to me that that's one area where they have made possible funding for projects and also does generate jobs. There is a program, an energy program, where cities can get funds to help with weatherization. Now, the problem right now is that the agency responsible is trying to gear up to be able to have the staffing to get those monies going forward. There is one other thing, and you mentioned collaboration. We work very closely with the other public interest groups, the governors, the state legislators, city managers. And there are seven of us. We have a vain title called the Big Seven. It's a hell of a lot better than what we used to be called, which was the PIGS, Public Interest Groups. So I feel better about that. But what we do, we meet every month, the directors, and try and find those issues where we are all in agreement. So when we have the governors, the state legislators, and ourselves, the other groups aligned, we can be pretty effective. And we've been effective in getting monies, for example, for community development, block grants in the past. We've been effective in the past in getting support for transportation. One of the things we are concerned about, though, is that what we call the intergovernmental system. It's a jargon, but the way the levels of government work together. From our perspective, this has really unraveled. It's terrible in general. And so what we're doing now is trying to reach out to the states, to the Congress, and to the administration to find ways that we can have a more civil engagement and recognize that decisions of one level of government have a profound effect on the other. And in that sense, I think the relationship is really strong, and I think that's something I see as positive.
Thank you. I do agree with your previous comment, too, on federal mandates, unfunded federal mandates. I have a real problem with that, and keep up your fight.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question. I was thinking here, since you encompass the entire United States and a lot of cities, do they have local government aid in other states? We have LGA in Minnesota. I don't know if you're familiar with that?
Oh, I'm very familiar with it. You know, it varies tremendously. There are some states where the states have given no money. And so, you know, it doesn't matter what's happening, because they've taken it away. California, for example, is worse than any I've seen, because what the state has been doing is taking locally raised revenue to balance the state budget. And the equivalent of the Minnesota League in California, the California League, has put an initiative on the ballot that would make it illegal for the state to take monies from the cities. At one point, the state tried to take $1 billion of gasoline tax monies from the cities to balance the state budget. In, let's see, in Massachusetts, they get state money, and there's going to be a dramatic cut in the state money that's going to have a horrible impact on the city. So the answer to your question, Councilman, is it varies all over the lot in terms of what kind of monies come from the state.
But there are some states that don't even have local government aid. Is that what you're telling me?
I'm telling, yes. And what's happened, and what happened is, they did have it, but the state, in order to balance their own budgets in the past, would just take it away. And so it ended up where they were essentially using monies that in the past had been provided in some formula to local governments, but they just took it. They took it all.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
One question.
Councilmember Reese?
Along that same line, and what did the cities do when they lost their LGA? Did they have to raise their taxes to be able to?
Some have done that. It's interesting, there are some cities that have, in fact, raised their millage later. Some have put it on the ballot, because they're required by law. There are some, when they lost it, they essentially dramatically cut the services in their communities. One of the things that we know is that the property taxes this year, because of assessments being done a year behind, that right now, the property taxes for cities are going to be reduced in the next couple of years, simply because we're always two years behind the economy. The economy will come up, and cities will be two years behind. And when reassessments are done, then the next year, the revenues will come up. But there are some cities that have raised revenues to provide basic services, and there are some where they have put it on the ballot, and some where the citizens have supported it, and some where they haven't. So it's a real mix across the country. I think it's hard to generalize at this point, other than to say cities are really having a tough time right now.
I have a fear myself, just as an individual, as far as the state withdrawing funding from our school districts and our colonies. from our school districts and our colonies and our cities, and what effect that's going to have on each one of those jurisdictions within our local government, and the state keeping the money, and local governments having to fend for themselves.
Yeah. I think, as I said, one of our roles at the National League of Cities is to be able to convey what local governments are about, and what are the services that they provide, and to make sure that there's an appreciation. Now, people are going to differ in terms of how much, but the fact is that there's a reason that we have local governments. And indeed, one of the things that I find when I go to international meetings, there are folks come up to me and in fact say, you know, we wish we had the same power as local governments in this country to raise revenues so that we're not dependent on the central governments. This country is unique in that cities can raise revenues based on the unique needs and interests of the citizens in their community.
Are there common concerns between county associations and school board associations and the NLC that you work together?
Oh, yeah, all the time, all the time. And in fact, I know Jim can talk about some of the things they're doing here in Minnesota, but we meet all the time. I mentioned with the other public interest groups, we meet, and with the school association, the school board association, the school superintendents, we work very closely with.
Thank you for being here and traveling so far to share this information with us.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Don. At this time, I'd like to welcome Jim Miller, Executive Director of the League of Minnesota Cities. Thanks for coming out here, Jim.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to spend, and it will be brief, a few brief minutes with you this evening. A long time ago, before I came to the league, I was a city manager, and I remember council meetings where there was a parade of speakers who would come and how impatient I got to get on with the real business before you. So I'm going to go back and try and practice what I at least complained about back then. One comment, though, before I get into the observations I wanted to share with you this evening, based on this last conversation about state aid, local government aid, and, you know, are we like all other states or not. I think Don's absolutely right. When I talk to my counterparts around the country, it's clear that regardless of where their revenues come from, they're in the same predicament that we are, if not worse. Hard as may be to believe, there are a lot of communities in different parts of the community that are feeling the pain of this recession even more so than most of our communities are. What I think makes our situation a little bit more unique is that I'm not aware of many states, maybe a handful, that really had the kind of philosophical underpinnings of our state-local fiscal relationship, the way that we created it in Minnesota in the 1970s, where we basically said, we want cities, regardless of where they are in the state of Minnesota, to have relatively the same ability to provide basic fundamental services to their citizens. And as a result of that, it really, I think, in some ways could be seen as a contract. The state, on the one hand, said, cities, you're not going to be able to raise your own revenues except through property taxes, for the most part, and a few fees. And on the other side, we will give you money to help balance where your property tax has to be. We've seen what's happened over the last decade, in particular with local government aid, and we've seen the impact that that's had on property tax levies in many of our communities. I think as the Minnesota miracle, as many call it, becomes more and more unraveled, and maybe is even threatened at some point with completely disappearing, it's going to be incredibly important for us as a community of cities to say, the other part of this was you took away our freedom to solve our own problems, and we're going to have to have more ability to generate revenues in ways that aren't burdens on the property tax. That doesn't mean it's going to be a solution. It doesn't mean that even if you had alternative revenue sources available, that they'd be the choices that you might like. But I think it's got to be more than just the state continues to cut local government aid, and we have to live with the consequences of it. So I think while some other states have shared revenues, we're one of a few that have been so heavily dependent on the state for shared revenues. And I think in terms of why that's true, we're even more unique. What I wanted to do this evening in just a moment is to very, very sincerely thank you, the city of Wilmer, for your membership in the League of Minnesota Cities. The league has been around since 1913, so we're going on almost 100 years. And the city of Wilmer was a founding member of the League of Minnesota Cities. I hope you're all familiar with the services we provide. I'm not going to go into them and explain them in any detail, but you know that we represent cities at the legislature, you know we have an inquiry service where, in fact, I looked up the numbers for the city of Wilmer, and over the last few years, there have been almost 100 inquiries that your staff or council members have made of our staff to answer various questions. We do training, we do a lot of training for elected and appointed officials, and we put on conferences that are aimed at dealing with the issues of the moment. Our annual conference this past June focused exclusively on the financial crisis. One of the bedrock programs that we have is our insurance program, which has been around since 1980. And again, I just, out of curiosity, looked today at, you know, where the city of Wilmer has been in terms of its relationship with the insurance trust over the last five years. And it looks as though in about the last five years or so, we've paid about $1 million in claims. But at the same time, and this is the important thing that I want to leave with you, we've returned $270,000 in dividends to you, to the utilities, and to the HRA. And that isn't just a gift from us, because it isn't our money, it's your money. And it really is what you might think of as the profit that a private insurance carrier would retain if you were paying premiums to a private provider. So we have returned over $270,000 in dividends. I want to thank you also for not just your membership in the league, but your leadership. Don thanked Les and your community for his involvement in the National League of Cities. I don't know if you really appreciate how rare it is for Minnesota City to have a president of the National League of Cities, which Les are an officer of the National League of Cities. We in Minnesota, I think, have only had three, four elected officials that served in that capacity in about 90 hours in the National League of Cities. So it's certainly a tribute to Mayor Heike, but as Don said, and it's important for you all to appreciate it, it's really a credit to the community because it isn't just the individual that gets selected. I've watched how these things happen. It really has to be the combination of the individual and the community. So you can all take a sense, at least a piece of the pride, in having your community represented in the National League of Cities that way. This next year, we've talked, you talked to Don a little bit, you heard about his prognosis for this coming year in Congress. You all know that this coming legislative session that will begin in January is going to be one of the most difficult, if not the most difficult, in recent memory, if for no other reason than to solve the budget deficit that is looming. And that's regardless of who gets elected as governor, it's regardless of who gets elected in the legislature. There may be different approaches to solving the problem, but the problem is so huge that the impact is going to be equally significant and, I think, difficult for cities in particular. The key to the League of Minnesota Cities is its collective strength, and that collective strength comes from the participation of the cities of Wilmer and the other 630 communities that are represented as part of the League of Minnesota Cities. We're not only going to be looking at issues like local government aid, which I know will be a critical issue this coming year, but you're aware, I'm sure, of the recent Supreme Court decision that severely restricted your ability to issue variances. We are going to be advocating for a legislative remedy to that law, and there will be many, many other things that will be involved in as well. So with that, I promise to be short. I hope that met your expectations. Again, I want to thank you, as sincerely as I know how, for your many, many years of participation, not just in terms of your dues, but for the people like the mayor, and like Mick, and like Steve, and others, who have participated actively in our policy committees or on our boards of directors for our various organizations in the league. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you also for being here and reporting to us. It's always a pleasure to have you come and visit us. The same kind of questions, the budget of the Minnesota League of Cities, and then what portion of our dues goes to the National League?
Actually, the League of Minnesota Cities is comprised of five separate legal entities, two of which have operating budgets. So for the league itself, the services that you most recognize other than insurance, it's about $7.5 million. For the insurance trust, the operating budget is about $9.5 million, so total of about $17 million operating budget. The league dues, I believe, and Don helped me, I think they're about $30,000 per year that we pay to the National League of Cities.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think one of the, if I can comment, I think one of the most valuable things about belonging to the League of Minnesota Cities and to the National League of Cities is the opportunity to network with other cities and elected and appointed leaders throughout the state and throughout the county, or throughout the country, to learn from them and to share what they are doing that perhaps we can learn from, perhaps we can integrate into our community, and they in turn might learn something from our community. We do very well here in Wilmer in terms of keeping a steady ship on an even keel, and, you know, it's very, it's very hard to be recognized on a national level for what we're doing on a local level. And we've been able to accomplish that over several years, and I'm very grateful for that opportunity to represent this council and this community at both the League of Minnesota Cities and the National League of Cities. It's been a very positive kind of experience, and I think Wilmer has been served extremely well. Don and Jim, thank you for your time for coming out to Wilmer. Thank you very much. Ardell, thank you for your time. I appreciate that. We will move on with the agenda. We're at number nine, which is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to address the council or the mayor tonight? Kevin, do we have any signups with anybody?
I didn't check it, sorry.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee Report for September 13th. Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if you didn't want to...
Rice Hospital Intergovernmental... Oh, we've got two agendas here. Okay. Thank you. This was inserted after the first one. Okay. Rice Hospital Intergovernmental Transfer, Rice Care Center. Mick, do you want to say anything first?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we had been contacted by the hospital regarding a possibility for a new revenue source for the hospital, and there, as you will hear, there are some time constraints. So I suggested that Mr. Schramm and Fenske come to the council meeting tonight, and we can try to work it out here and hopefully meet the application deadline.
Welcome. Mike Schramm is the CEO of Rice Memorial Hospital. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And we, just to preface the issue here, I'm going to just kind of introduce what the issue is and speak to it a little bit, and then I'm going to ask Bill Fenske, our chief financial officer, to step up here and share a little bit more about the detail of what the issue is and why we're before the council tonight. And I'll start by just saying that we had, Bill and I had talked to Mick and to Steve within the last several days, and I must apologize for the timing here. The issue, we're a little bit behind the gun as far as the timeline goes because we've been trying to get information from the state about the application process for the issue that we're going to describe for you tonight. So typically, we'd have gone to the Finance Committee and discussed that in detail before it's brought to the full council. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to be able to do that based on the window that's closing quickly on this issue. But I will preface it by saying that this is a positive issue. And actually, this last legislative session was passed into law in May, but Senator Gary Kubli, who's from the Granite Falls area, sponsored a bill that would provide owners of, public owners of nursing homes to have some additional costs allocated through enhancement of reimbursement rates, is kind of the gist of what it is we're talking about here. So any public nursing owners, public owners of nursing homes, city, county, and so forth, would have the ability to be able to take advantage of this. And it was, again, authored by Senator Gary Kubli, was passed into law in May, and actually, for the past several months, we have been trying to get information from the state to better understand what's involved so that we can get our application process going. It's taken some time, and so, again, we're trying to take advantage of the window and time here that is quickly closing. In essence, what we're asking for from the council tonight is for an adjustment, approval of an adjustment for the intergovernmental transfer, which is the dollars and a percentage in dollars that flow from the hospital annually to the city. And Bill will explain a little bit more about the calculation of those funds. In essence, what we're trying to take advantage of, there was a law that was passed in place through the legislature, and there's a state and a federal portion, and we want to be able to take advantage of the federal portion. The state is actually held harmless, and there's ways in which the dollars flow from the city to the state, and how we're going to address through the intergovernmental transfer how dollars flow through that IGT transfer from the hospital to the city. But we do want to be able to take advantage of this, and it is enhanced reimbursement. It would be allocation of some costs that can be increased, and reimbursement increased through a process that we call rebasing. And that's something that the state goes through every year, every so often, to look at rates and how they pay health care facilities, and in this case, the nursing home. So that's for Medicaid patients. So with that, there was a memo that was included in your packet, I know, and actually, we had asked to be on the agenda here this week, and so it was kind of late. But there is a window of time, and actually, we have to be able to apply by September 30th, the end of this month, to take advantage of this. And we certainly want to be able to do that. So that's the discussion that we had with Mick and Steve about that. So that's what we're asking for ultimately, is approval of the council for an increase on a change in the IGT rate that flows from the hospital to the city. And I think with that, I'm going to let Bill Fenske, our chief financial officer, step up here and just share some more about the details of this change that came through the legislature. I must also reference Troy Barick is also here. He's the administrator of our Rice Care Center as well. Bill?
Thank you, Mike. Welcome, Bill.
And thank you for listening to our request tonight. As Mike had shared, you know, this is a very critical piece to us. One of the things why it is so important is because of the state's historical lack of participation in receiving federal dollars for medical assistance. And we're very supportive of what Senator Kubli did back in this last legislative session, which provided government-owned entities such as the Rice Hospital through the Rice Care Center to have an application where we could garner some of these federal dollars. We receive about one-third of our medical assistance funding, which is about half of all of our funding at the Rice Care Center. One-third of it comes from the state, and two-thirds of it comes from federal government. And so what this law provides is that if the governmental owner, the city of Wilmer, will agree to reimburse the state for the state share, we can receive those federal dollars. Now, the actual dollars that we're talking about are about $170,000 for the state share, and it's nearly double that for the federal share. So what our proposal is, is that we would reopen the intergovernmental transfer rate, which currently is 0.4% of Rice's net assets with a floor of $200,000. So what that means is we will, we continue to transfer $200,000 to the city every year. If our net assets increase over $50 million, we would transfer more money. What we're proposing is that we would adjust that from 0.4% to 0.75%. What that means is that we would go from $200,000... What that means is that we would go from $200,000 up to $370,000, and so that would hold the city pretty much neutral or harmless in its funding of the state's share. How the mechanics work is that the state would invoice the city on a monthly basis about $14,000 a month. The city would pay that to the state, and then Rice would receive those higher medical assistance dollars from the state and the federal in terms of higher rates, which help to pay for our operating costs. And so that's what we're looking at doing. Now, the thing that we are not sure of is will the federal government approve this? We do not have clarification on that, and all of this, of course, is contingent upon will the federal government approve this kind of legislation. There has not been any precedence on that that we know of, and so that's why we're unclear at this time. Even if we file the application and we move forward with it, we're not going to know probably until the end of the year. So with that, we would entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Bill. Councilmembers, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just a little concerned about one part of what you said, Bill. You're going to, you're going to change it so that we get 375 approximately. What if the billing changes, right now it's based on this $14,000 a month roughly? What if that changes? Then the city is obligated to make up that difference. We won't be getting any additional money from Rice? Could the city end up in a negative cash position with this?
Well, I think technically that answer would be yes, but I think it would be the good faith of the Rice Hospital to come back to the table if there's a material change in that. I mean, it is, it's our intention that there is no negative impact to the, to the city.
No, there's really no gain or no loss to the city. This is strictly, basically, a flow-through?
Correct.
And allows you to--
Correct.
--to get that. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Bill. I just want to make sure I get this right. I heard you say that the money comes from the federal government to the city, the city gives it to the state, the state reimburses Rice. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's why they call it a flow-through?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Medical assistance is a program that started back in the '60s, and it's a state and federal initiative, a joint initiative, and so even though the state pays us for our medical assistance rates at our nursing home, there are still, well, approximately two-thirds of those dollars are still federal dollars.
Did I also hear you say that we haven't been utilizing the federal dollars?
The state of Minnesota hasn't.
Well, the state hasn't?
Yeah. The state of Minnesota has passed on matching dollars from the, from the federal government.
I'm getting it now. This is a couple of weeks ago, but this, that happened, correct?
Couple of weeks ago.
Where Polenti had said that--
Yeah. It's that same theme of, same thread of the concept.
Okay.
And then a couple of weeks ago, Polenti accepted, I think, $260 million, I think, and then there is federal dollars with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers?
Yeah.
Councilmember DeBleek?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand this right, the federal dollars will flow directly to the city and bypass the state?
They'll flow through the state, and then the state pays Rice Care Center in terms of higher rates for those medical assistance patients, the residents. So those federal dollars don't really come back to the city. They just flow directly to Rice.
But they come through the state?
They come through the state.
What if the state decides not to pass those dollars on like they have--
Well, I think the statute requires that they have to.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd like to ask our city administrator or our city finance director if you have thoroughly reviewed this, and are you comfortable with this plan?
We're okay with it, Mr. Mayor. We visited with the hospital officials last week when this issue came to the table. My, one concern was the city's ability to front-end these monthly $14,000 costs, but Bill solved that problem for us by suggesting that rather than historically paying their intergovernmental transfer payment at the end of each quarter, they would move the payment to the front. That would give us the cash that we need to make these monthly payments, and it should be clear that there's no significant adverse effect on our intergovernmental transfer payment relationship with the hospital, and I would recommend that the council agree to make that modification.
Is this any matter that our city attorney has to weigh in on?
I don't believe so.
Rich, do you think you have to look at this stuff, or are you okay?
Bill and I discussed it later this afternoon, and I'm comfortable with it also.
My only hesitation is the possible delay in the state forwarding the money, you know, out here to Wilmer, either to the hospital or to the city, based on past experience with the state. You know, the state of Minnesota has not always been very responsible in forwarding the money out here as it was supposed to do. Case in point is our airport. You know, it took us nearly a year to get the money that had been authorized before it was finally allocated. So that's the, that's the one area that makes me edgy, but if you guys are comfortable with it--
Well, we are, and the reason for that comfort level is historically, we have not had delays in our medical assistance reimbursement payments from the state, and so we don't, we're not anticipating that this will be any different than histor, than history.
Mick, what do we need here for action?
What we're actually talking about here tonight, Mr. Mayor, is renegotiating the intergovernmental transfer payment, and it's simply going to reflect a revision in the amount of the net assets that they agree to pay, as Bill mentioned, from 0.004 to 0.0075.
And is that a simple motion or a resolution?
Well, I think that it's going to be a resolution. It is an agreement.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one thing, this application does need to come from the city, and so we need to, we would, we would ask that the application be supported and approved by the council for the city administrator to make that application.
Can we put all this into one resolution? All right. Councilmembers, Councilmember Anderson?
I would, I would move that we renegotiate the intergovernmental transfer agreement and all the other things about Mick--
Yeah.
Yeah. Mick, to do the application.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to authorize the change in the intergovernmental transfer, and also to have the city sign off on this application process. Further comment or questions from councilmembers? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Baggily?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the Finance Committee report for September 13th. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda had to do with public comment on the mayor's 2011 budget, and in our meeting, there was no one there present to comment, and we had no letters, so that is for information only. The second item has to do with the EDC proposed budget. Mr. Rehnquist, the EDC Executive Director, reviewed the EDC 2011 budget with the committee. He noted that the 2011 revenue includes $455,000 from the county tax levy, and that's the same, same amount that was levied in 2010, and I think '09 and '08 also. The EDC is also proposing to utilize $30,111 from their reserves as an additional funding source. The overall budgeted expenditures for 2011 will be in the amount of $485,111, and that is a decrease of $700 from the 2010 budget. Following a lengthy discussion and a good question and answer period, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to approve the EDC 2011 budget as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to approve the Economic Development Center's 2011 budget as it's been proposed. Comment? Councilmember Ammon?
One question. I'm curious on the $30,111 out of the, being taken out of the reserve, the reserve accounts. Somebody explain to me what the--
Steve, could you come up to the microphone?
What that'll come down, what that'll bring the reserves down to?
I'd like to welcome Steve Rehnquist, the Director of the Economic Development Center.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Ammon, we have an excess of $400,000 in our reserves right now, so that actually will bring it down to just about $400,000 even.
And what, do you have right now any, your unallocated reserves that you have right now?
We have--
Are any of those dedicated to any certain specific--
That's a, that's a, that's a very insightful question. The $180,000 of that is dedicated as a loan reserve fund, so we have, we have right around $270,000 in unallocated reserves.
Do you feel this is going to have an impact with the 30, dipping into $30,000 this year on any of your future prospective client out there, business, or assisting any other people in the, in the area as far as economic development, or what's the board's decision?
Another good question. I, we don't think so. We think much as the city, you like to have half your levy in reserves to be able, you know, so you don't have to borrow to, to fund your activities. That would, that would still leave us in the, safely over the $230,000 level that we would want to be at. Some of you may recall, we recently had a rather, rather exciting and interesting proposal with Burlington Northern Railroad going after stimulus monies out of this $50 billion that the federal government has set aside to do a $58 million bypass of Western Wilmer and also rail service into the, the new industrial park, and the EDC was going to, in the, in the initial grant phase, we needed some, which is amazing to call $50,000 seed money, but they wanted some seed money, and we had allocated $50,000 out of that, out of those funds. There seems to be sufficient funds. In the end, we, it was the taxpayers' dollars. This was not unallocated grant dollars, and we have to be very cautious in always spending that money.
Thank you. I appreciate your fiscally conservative outlook on the budget, and you're going through this with everybody else in the other group and all the other agencies in our city. My primary concern was on the unallocated reserves and how this can affect us, and good luck with the railroad. I think that's going to be a long pull.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call? A simple motion at this point, Mr. Mayor. All right. Those in favor of the motion for approving the 2011 budget for EDC as proposed, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
The next item has to do with the Design Center, and Bev Doherty from the Design Center presented information on a proposed partnership with the Minnesota Main Street Program. Under the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota, the Main Street Program assists organizations and communities with downtown revitalization efforts. Wilmer has been designated as one of four Minnesota Main Street cities throughout the state. As such, a memorandum of understanding is required to be executed between the city of Wilmer, the Wilmer Design Center, and Minnesota Main Street. By entering into the agreement, the Wilmer Design Center, on behalf of the city, would have access to more funding opportunities as well as more resources for services. This is an annual agreement that will not require further expenditures on the part of the city of Wilmer, other than the amount that we currently fund the Design Center for. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee approving the Minnesota Main Street Memorandum of Understanding, subject to the city attorney review, including an agreement between the city and the Design Center detailing financial responsibilities.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the Minnesota Main Street Memorandum of Understanding, subject to city attorney review. Comment? Councilmember Anderson?
I think we do need to hear from the city attorney if he was okay with, with this.
We'll refer to Rich if that's the way the council wants to go.
That is the way we, we wanted it to go. So, so our action then, I'm now a little bit concerned, they won't be signed until, even if we approve it, it won't be signed until Rich--
Subject to the city attorney's review. Yes.
Okay.
I think we've done that before.
That way? That wasn't the way that I thought it was going to come to us tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, you've heard the motion, and it's been seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries.
The, the next item was a fascinating discussion on GASB 54. Finance Director Olkins presented the committee information regarding the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, Gasby, Statement Number 54, which changes the terms and definitions of fund balance categories. And Steve, we all paid rapt attention when you were discussing. This was required to be implemented for the fiscal years beginning after June 15th, 2010. So it is important, and, and the city is on top of that, and so that was for information only. The next item has to do with investment policy discussion. Again, Finance Olkins Director explained to the committee that the city's current investment policy states, and quote, "No more than 40% of the city's total investment portfolio will be invested in a single security type or with a single financial, financial institution or broker-dealer on the day of purchase," end quote. It's been the city's practice to apply the 40% threshold to the combined total of both investments and cash equivalents, since most cash equivalents are on deposit, earning interest in either a savings or checking account. Staff is recommending that the policy be revised to read, quote, "No more than 40% of the city's total deposits will be invested," end quote. So this is just a very minor change, but by changing the terminology, the city will be in full compliance with, with our own investment policy by including the short-term deposits, such as savings and checking accounts, in the calculation. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce, I would, I'd move the recommendation of the committee to approve the revision of the city of Wilmer's investment policy in Section 11.0, diversification from investment portfolio to deposits, as we had noted above.
Second.
There is a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the revisions to the city of Wilmer's investment policy as described. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item was a budget amendment. Staff presented to the committee that recently the council action had approved an adjustment of job duties for the city planner position, who is now also the airport manager in addition to her planner duties. The fire department maintenance position also being changed to include maintenance supervision over all city buildings. These changes incurred, incurred an increase in payroll cost, for which it is proposed that the funds will be transferred from the fire department temporary payroll budget to the planning and the fire department regular payroll budgets. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce a resolution approving the transfer of $3,504 from the fire department temporary payroll budget to the planning and to the fire department payroll budgets.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution-- There's a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution approving the transfer of $3,504 from the fire department temporary payroll budget to the planning and fire department payroll budget. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was discussion, discussing the mayor's 2011 budget. Finance Director Okens reviewed the revenues that were listed in the mayor's budget, including the various types of taxes, special assessments, license permits, LGA, other state and federal aids and service charges, fines and forfeits, miscellaneous revenue, and other funding sources. The fund balances amount is the result of the three-phase plan that was instituted and to reduce our expenditures in 2009. If you remember, we, we did that in anticipation of some possible cuts, and the money that we saved then went into the excess revenues over expenditures for that year, and that was brought forward for the 2011 budget. That was for information only. The final item was reports, and we got the July Rice Trust Report. That was the end of the business. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded to file the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are the, is the committee report for the Public Work Safety Committee for September 14th. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item was on request from Councilmember Dokken in discussion in regards to city's policy on snow removal, and if you, as the council will recall, we've discussed this a number of times over the past few years. And it regards concerns of plowing around cars and maybe the, some added expense. We thought maybe there was some added expense or more expense to that than if we didn't have the cars parked in the street. At our meeting, we had our Public Works Superintendent Ron Gilbertson, and he briefed the committee on the current snow removal procedures and stated that many times the areas left by parked cars are picked up the next day when they're doing sanding. And the city has prohibited one side of the street from November 1st through March 31st in certain areas that are, that we've seen as a problem. So this is for information only. There was no action on this issue. Second item was a recommendation that the council accept project, Project 815D5 and issue final payment to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Painesville. The final payment is the retainage that was held until the punch list of items was completed. And there's one change order in the project, and the total cost with that one change order for this project was $1,381,037.12. So I would introduce a resolution to accept Project 815D5 as constructed, issue final payment in the amount of $71,426.86 to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Painesville.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to accept Project 815D-5 as constructed and issue final payment to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Painesville. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item is in regards to our wastewater treatment plant project, and the general contractor, Graham Construction, they've done a test, they've successfully demonstrated the satisfactory operation of all of their systems except Number 6 solids handling and Number 7 solids storage and associated facilities have achieved substantial completion as of August 23rd, Due to the limited number of items to be completed before final acceptance, the recommendation to the committee was a reduction in the retainage from 5% to 2.5% of the contract leaving a remaining balance of approximately 1.2 million. I would introduce a resolution to approve that reduction in the retainage for Project 812C.
Second.
There is a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to approve the reduction in the retainage account from 5% to 2.5% for Project 812-C. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next is some contract amendments in regards to our Western Collector, Donahue and Associates, is proposing that we amend the engineering services agreement for the Western Interceptor Sewer due to a change in the route and elimination of Lakeland Drive and two lift stations from the project. The revision includes the design only of the Western Interceptor Sewer and the deletion of design and bidding of the Ortonblad and Arby's Lift Station. Compensation for the change in services from the engineering agreement dated July 21st, 2009, will be $65,617 in a reduction, changing the contract amount to $195,013. So I would introduce a resolution to approve the amendment for engineering services with Donahue and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to amend the engineering services agreement with Donahue and Associates and the numbers just quoted. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then a contract has been prepared by, with Donahue and Associates for the design and construction of, in regards to both the Ortonblad and the Arby's Lift Stations. Components, two significant components of the comprehensive plan to facilitate the route of the wastewater flow to the new wastewater treatment facility. And the two phases for design and construction are gravity sewer to eliminate the need for the Ortonblad Lift Station and also the Arby's Lift Station, and this would become a gravity flow then. The design and construction is proposed to be Phase 2 of the decommissioning project to accommodate funding eligibility and design planning to include easements and right-of-way issues. And I would introduce a resolution to approve the engineering services agreement with Donahue for not to exceed amount of $67,598, and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded for a resolution to approve the engineering services agreement with Donahue and Associates for an amount not to exceed $67,958. Comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next was the monthly report from Donahue and Associates on our wastewater treatment facility relocation project. And the program managing activities included meeting with our city staff regarding funding and finance issues, submittal of pay request number 11 for the 30-year loan to the Public Facilities Authority for the Clean Water Revolving Fund, and pay request number 11 for the Public Facilities Authority for American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Donahue continues to assist with seeking funding opportunities from the Water Resources Development Act and the EPA State and Tribal Assistance Grant. They have been providing information for the city's asset management, maintenance, and operational program, along with the work on gravity collection, piping, force main capital costs. And several change orders were prepared and presented to the city council and documentation re, documentation production and review for legal counsel on the City of Wilmer versus Quam was completed. Projects 813D3, 814D4, 815D5, and 816D6 are substantially complete, and the contractors are currently working on punch list items. Wastewater Treatment Facility itself achieved substantial completion as of August 23rd, 2010. And the liquid portion of the system was tested for seven days and successfully demonstrated the equipment systems and Associates facilities are operational. The city assumed ownership on August 23rd, 2010. The transition of flow from the existing facility to the new facility says has begun, but where are we now? Well, we're- Couple days away, huh? It's gonna, it's gonna be, as I understand it, it's gonna be moved back to the following week. Okay. But things are still moving, so we're in good shape. I'm glad it's moving. It is, it is being added incrementally with the induction of industrial wastewater, which will increase slowly over the course of two weeks, and at the end of six weeks, all sanitary sewers will flow to the new plant for processing. We had a couple of miscellaneous items that were brought up at the committee meeting, and one of them was a meeting that took place that same day as the Public Work Safety Meeting last Tuesday, with all of our area officials invited, and it was in regards to Grass Lake and Lake Wakanda, the first phase of the plan of restoration of the original Grass Lake basin, and it's unknown at this time if the city would see any long-term benefits. The second miscellaneous item was brought up by Councilmember DeBlick, and he acknowledged the contribution of, and here it says approximately 2.8 million. I think we've all got a letter which, from Jeff Kimpeling, from the MUC, which relayed to us that the MUC's net investment was $2,620,006, 600 bucks. So it was a very substantial investment from municipal utilities in regards to construction costs at our new wastewater treatment facility. That is the end of the minutes, Mr. Mayor. If there's any questions, I'll certainly, if you're willing to answer them. Mr. Mayor, members of the council-
Just a second, is there, just a second. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. We have a motion, it's been seconded to file the minutes. Mick, go ahead.
Would you like, John, to explain the status of that-
Sure.
Program, so everybody knows where we are?
Thanks, John.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just to make sure everyone doesn't think something bad's going on at the waste treatment plant. What we currently have is, we brought the industrial side up, and, and you're correct, the liquid side is doing quite well. And in doing well, it is creating solid waste. The two items you discussed, the solids handling portion of the project isn't quite ready. We're going to delay the time in the final flow from the old plant to the new until the 29th of this month. And that'll give us time to get the belt diggers ready to handle the waste, and it'll coordinate it. So there's nothing wrong, it's just a matter of bringing it up. So let's see, explanation.
Thank you, John. How are the bugs doing out there, the microbes?
They're doing better than expected. That's why we need to put this off a week.
Okay.
Sorry. Thanks.
Councilmember Amen?
A couple of questions on the minutes, Mr. Mayor and Chairman. On item number one, on the snow removal procedure, I saw that was brought up and how we can do more with less and, and try to accomplish the snow removal, and I wasn't at that meeting because I'm not on the committee, but I'm curious, was, was the committee, or did you discuss having more snowy emergencies? Or, I know we've been reluctant in the past, but is this, who knows what this winter's gonna bring us, but I know that might be a cost savings for us in the terms of overtime, and I'm wondering if the committee discussed that, or if you had any input from staff on, maybe we should be having more snowy emergencies and street clearing, rather than just in some, some immediate areas?
I don't recall any discussion in regards to snowy emergencies, but the explanation that we got from our superintendent, I was quite surprised in the fact that he didn't feel that there was added, any added expense in us having to come back to clean where cars were parked. I always felt very strongly that that was gonna be a savings, but everything that I heard, and I guess other members of the committee or council members that were there that heard it, the explanation from him, or staff, seemed to me that we had a very efficient process and way of handling our snow and snow removal.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just looking at the risk course of hitting the covered cars, and I know we have pretty good drivers and pretty good employees, and we're doing really well. I'm just wondering if we can reduce that risk, or if that should be considered next time we have a 24-hour snowfall like we did last year, if we shouldn't be maybe using our right to use a snow emergency, just for the ease of, for everybody, to put it on one of their cars on one side of the street, east, west, north, south. But I know we talked about this in the budgeting, in the budget at our, at our meetings before, I'm just, I thought there might have been more clarification on what might be done, but if you feel comfortable with it, I'm fine. I just wanted to bring that up for discussion.
Now, and I, and again, anybody else can certainly feel free to come into the conversation and, and give an explanation of what they heard, but what I, what I heard from Ron, and Ron is a very competent supervisor, and he really reassured me in what I heard, that what we're doing is, is the right way, the best way, most efficient way, and changing anything, we really don't need to. And then the changes that we've made as far as seasonal, no parking. One of them that, that I recall, two of them, Lakeland Drive, which you're probably very familiar with, and Fifth Street, south of Wilmer Avenue. There is no parking from, was it November 1st to March 31st, I believe. And I, and I believe that, you know, in those cases, and, and the, and the council, has given staff the ability to be able to sign appropriately in those areas that become difficult.
Okay. If you're comfortable with that, thank you for the comments, appreciate that.
All right. We have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the minutes.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor, on the miscellaneous items, I attended the meeting at Lake with the State Representative Yonkey, and also with Senator Gimsy regarding Lake Wakanga. I'm wondering, just for the public's interest, if, if we could maybe elaborate briefly on the storm water credits, that we are not going to be able to get through the EPA, even though we are spending a considerable amount of money to clean up our area of the watershed, and maybe some other areas that are not in the city limits through the watershed process. And I'm just wondering if we, clarification on that, why that was not accepted by the EPA? I'm really curious why they were not giving us credit.
Mick?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I'm not sure I understand either, Mr. Amen, but clearly they have taken the position that they won't give the city any credit for monies that we expend in the Grass Lake area, thus our current position that any investment we make in stormwater management should be done on this side, the bypass within
the, the water that is, is in a way of thirty-some feet a drop from, uh, Cano High, which is, what, five miles away, uh, dropping into the city of Wilmer, and we're, we're unfortunately in a low spot, but with that, how much of the other areas are contributing to the contaminants that are coming and flowing into not only Hawk Creek but ditch number twenty-three A, I believe, and I don't know if it's significant or not, but I think with that alone, that, that would give us some, I, I think they should be, I think the EPA should be reconsidering their stands on it, and I, I just wanted to elaborate on that, I don't know what we can do or if we can't do anything about it, Mick, but...
Well, I think the contributions from the other watershed are significant.
Yeah.
Um...
But we don't know what's happening.
Much more so than even Wilmer, even with all of the hard surface that, that we have. I think people need to understand that the watershed coming from the Wilmer direction represents only about fifty percent of our community, um, and so it's much smaller than the watershed to, to the east, and I think that often in this conversation about flooding and, and stormwater and water quality, um, we don't get a fair shake in, in the debate, but, you know, that's the way it is, and all we can do is what we've been doing, and that's to say to the group that's working on the Grass Lake project that we are indeed concerned about water quality and, and stormwater, and, and we are willing partners, it's just that at this point, we're not able to participate financially.
Well, thank you for that explanation, appreciate it.
Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Next is number thirteen on the agenda, Community Development Committee report for September sixteenth. Councilmember DeBlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first item on our agenda, we discussed the guide for neighborhoods. Uh, the committee discussed and reviewed the pamphlet, the guide for neighborhoods. This pamphlet was prepared in, um, March of two thousand and nine by the city. Um, the, uh, handout is, uh, a compiling of the city ordinances, it is intended to provide basic information to city residents regarding neighborhood conduct. Several suggestions were made, uh, for changes on future printings to, to the guide. Uh, those suggestions were to include a statement regarding, um, violations being subject to fines and jail time, and added that the brush site is an alternative to composting for extra grass and leaves. It is also suggested that the, um, documents state that violations should be, should be reported to the police department or to the, um, Department of Planning and Developmental Services. The committee recommended, uh, increasing distribution of the guide and suggested that it be distributed at adult basic education classes through the Main Street, Wilmer, uh, local realtors, in the county, uh, Human Services Building, uh, Heartland Community Action Agency, and at Cultural Resource Centers. Um, item number two, um, demographics and economic profile, uh, the committee discussed the, uh, demographic and economic profile of Wilmer and Canoe High County as prepared by Cameron, um, Mache of the Local Debt Office. The committee expressed, uh, appreciation for the information, and just suggested that the review of such data occur on a more regular basis. Um, item number three, uh, was updates, um, the committee was updated on the status of the United, um, FCS and the Kuzman, uh, PUD projects, and also the committee was informed, uh, that staff was sponsoring a planning workshop in November. Workshop is geared towards city and county citizen planners, uh, that would be applicable for, as review material for professionals as well. The committee discussed the status of the A sign property on Fourteenth Street Southwest. Uh, the business closed several years ago, and, um, the property subsequently underwent cleanup by MPCA due to mercury contamination resulting from the distribution, the destruction of fluorescent light bulbs. Nearly one thousand pounds of fluorescent light bulbs were removed from the property, and the property is now tax forfeited. Uh, city staff is working with the county to find a use for the site. Nothing allowed in the current zoning district would be suitable use on the property, and staff suggested that, uh, a conditional use permit, uh, be considered for possible use to give, uh, neighbors a chance to weigh in and have their concerns heard. It was the consensus of the committee that staff consult with the city attorney and pursue the commercial use, uh, permit option for use of this site.
I think, um, is that a map of the site, Bruce? You want to point out on there exactly the property that is...
The A sign property is the property roughly this gravel area that's being, uh, shown with the red pointer. What you're seeing in front of you here are old signs and piles of garbage that existed when the business was in operation. All of that is gone today, the only thing that remains is, uh, the small building on the back of the property. The property is extremely small, it measures seventy feet deep by ninety feet wide, and, uh, the county's very concerned about what could possibly be done with that site. Because it is tax forfeited, they don't have any, um, options for public use, it can't be used for residential purposes, so there's no, uh, reason for the owner of this home to purchase this property. We're gonna have to look at something unique in order to, uh, maintain the use of the property and to make sure it doesn't just grow up in weeds and become an eyesore.
And you mentioned the current zoning on this property?
The property is currently zoned R two for residential purposes, so the use that was there operated as illegal non-conforming use, but under the terms of our current, current zoning ordinance, it would not be suitable for anything other than residential, so, uh, the challenge will be for the planning commission to come up with a, um, unique system of putting a conditional use permit in place on that property, because we, we have had contacts from several people who'd be interested in using the property for a contractor shop, and, uh, for example, they want to park two vehicles outside and possibly store drywall materials inside the building. Um, it, it's probably the least intense use you could come up with for that site, and in my opinion would be least, uh, less intense than even having it be redeveloped as residential purposes, which again is impossible under the terms of the agreement that the county has with the MPCA for the property.
All right. I guess that was the last, uh, item on our agenda, if there are no questions, uh, the motion to file these minutes.
Second.
There's a motion that's been seconded to file these minutes.
Question?
Any comments, Councilmember Amen?
Sorry to take a few time, we can, Mick, quick. Thousand pounds of fluorescent lights were removed in the job site, and my question is, and I was at the committee meeting, but it didn't dawn on me until I got a comment from Dennis that that's a lot of pounds of fluorescent light bulb, mercury contamination. What can we do so this doesn't happen again? Um, Bruce, uh, I know we, we have our operation sweep where we go down through the residential areas and ticket and mark people for properties that are included, are we not monitoring or have we maybe just missed, misdiagnosed what was going on on that, uh, that property in the past before they foreclosed on the property?
Uh, it's an excellent question. I would say that because the property had operated for so long as a commercial or industrial site, there probably wasn't proper vigilance paid to the property, nor had we received any complaints, so, uh, most of the light bulbs that were stored on the site were actually, um, stored behind the building, and that's where the main pile was cleaned up. Currently, the threat, every day the threat of mercury contamination diminishes because it is a volatile compound, and exposed to air, it will dissipate, it will remain in the soil until the soil is turned over, but the MPCA has determined that that doesn't pose a very significant threat to the reuse of the site unless it would be used for, um, a residential use. I, I think what they're saying is that businesspeople and contractors are more disposable than homeowners, and, um, you know, it's acceptable to use for a small business but not for a residential purpose. The activity level would be so low that it really doesn't pose a threat.
Well, I guess my que- thank you, Mayor and Council, I guess my question is if, if we could look into this, maybe Bruce, or maybe somehow with staff, if we're maybe gonna increase our surveillance, I don't know how many sign companies we have in the community, that might, I don't want to have this happen again. Uh, like, if we can monitor and collaborate with the owners of the properties that are disposing of these light bulbs or not disposing of them, um, I'm just wondering if we need to look into it a little further. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, Councilmember Amen, uh, the other sign companies that do exist in town and the companies that do sign work do not accumulate any product on site, um, it's delivered to the landfill or to, uh, the recycling facility as, as soon as they do a demolition. All the fluorescents have to go to the recycling facility, they can't go to the landfill.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Bruce, uh, I brought it up at the, uh, at the committee meeting, but are we going to notify the homeowners? I see that the house directly north of that is a nice-looking piece of property, but are we gonna allow the, the neighbors to be notified of the action that the planning commission is gonna take? Can we notify them?
What I would propose as a staff person is that the planning commission look at a way to craft a conditional use permit for that zone, and then by its very nature, if anyone would apply for that conditional use permit, all the neighbors within three hundred fifty feet of that property would be notified for a hearing.
Good, yeah, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we don't want to disturb the, the soil there at all?
I'm not really sure it's that great a threat. The county environmental people have been led to believe that the, uh, mercury that remains in the soil is not a threat unless it would be, uh, dug up and then there would be direct contact exposure. The ideal situation would be to have someone come in there and clean it up and to, uh, truck off the mercury-laden soil and have it turned over so that the volatility could, uh, be utilized and the mercury would, would eventually dissipate, but, um, that's an expense that I don't know that too many people are gonna be willing to bear, plus we need to find out what PCA's true position will be with regard to the contamination. Um, if any possible purchaser is doing their due diligence, they're gonna need to understand that if they purchase that property, they will become in, they will, um, enter the chain of title, and by doing so will accept certain responsibilities and liabilities, and I want to make sure that any buyer knows that.
So it wouldn't be an option for us to get the land and sell the building, move it off, and make a detention pond there?
I think on a seventy-foot by ninety-foot piece of property, the options would be limited. It's always an option.
'Cause there's a, a lot of water on this side of the tracks, it's been there all summer, so I'm, I'm sure there's plenty of water that flows in that area that goes down to Garfield and Canoe High, and it's just like what we did with the house that we purchased, we started small, and there'd be another small property that holds some water.
Well, I, I think our big concern there would obviously be in if the city wants to get in the chain of title and deal with the contamination and the cleanup costs. As, as long as the site's virtually undisturbed, I think MPCA is willing to let it exist the way it is with a low hazard, but as soon as you start messing on the site, then I think you'll have to deal with those contamination and cleanup issues.
It's just a thought.
And that's a question we can investigate a little further.
Um, I had a, just a comment on number one, on that information guide for neighborhoods. When this was first talked about, I, I was under the understanding that the guide is meant for, for information and education to help people understand, you know, what are the expectations in a neighborhood, taking care of your property, cutting your grass, whatever it is, shoveling your snow, but, um, this comment here, and maybe somebody can clarify this, that it also, there's, there's, somebody suggested a statement should be put in there about violations being subject to fines or jail time. You know, we never put that kind of language in any kind of city information, it seems like that's a real punitive approach to a neighborhood guide, is that you may end up in jail, you know, where did that, where did that language come from? It, it's, it's pretty negative language, and something that's meant to educate the public.
I think there is, uh, certain members on the committee that felt that, you know, violation of certain city ordinance does result in, you know, can result in fines and, uh, possibly jail time, so, um, that it should also state in there that any violations of, of, uh, that they're found in any violations, that, uh, that they should be aware of that, and it should be printed in, uh, in this guide, you know, it's an informational guide for, for citizens of the community.
Okay, I, I just think it's a negative approach to handling a problem. You know, you start threatening people with jail time, that's not necessarily educating them, that's threatening them.
Councilmember Amen?
Yeah, we did discuss it at quite length, and, uh, maybe those, that's not the appropriate term, you know, we'll go through due process, might, might, might be better, uh, for enforcement on the issues that are not upheld by the, by the property owners, might be a little better way of explaining it, but in reality, they could, you know, uh, I guess what we wanted to do is, is, is to make people aware that this should be, shouldn't be taken lightly due to the amount of complaints we've had, and, uh, that somehow we put in there that, you know, these, these, you should be accountable for these things, and that, uh, it should be mentioned in this, uh, brochure. We also talked about marketing this, uh, information a little further to, I think, Ron Christiansen brought up realtors and, uh, other people that are, uh, community groups, uh, right now it's at the HRA, so we're trying to get a better distribution of this, which we hope will help, uh, alleviate some of the problems and questions people that come to the community aren't aware of, uh, that these are the requirements that we have in our city, so overall, I think it's a good, good piece of information. Um, you're right, that is a strong term, you know, that could probably be changed.
I think, you know, the rest of the guide is very helpful.
Very helpful.
But this, this, you know, threatening people with jail time is pretty negative. All right.
I think, Mr. Mayor, we also, we also discussed the possibility of having this guide available in, um, probably two or three different languages as well. That makes sense, that makes sense. All right, all these things are for information, the motion is to file the minutes, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Um, next is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone certain lands from R two to limited business. Now, Bruce, would you explain that, please?
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. At their meeting of last week, the planning commission discussed a proposal by Craig Lees to rezone his property at nineteen fifty Nineteenth Avenue Southwest from R two, one and two Family Residential to a limited business classification. For a number of years, he has lived in the majority of the structure and operated a small chiropractic business in the balance of the home. Um, there is a, uh, he currently has the property for sale and has an interested buyer, uh, that would like to live in the building and operate a small office from the facility. The comprehensive plan that was adopted earlier this year calls for the eventual creation of a medical and business professional corridor along Nineteenth Avenue, and this particular rezoning request would be consistent with that portion of the plan. For that reason, um, the planning commission approved the rezoning and recommends to the council that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing on October fourth.
Thank you, Bruce. Council?
I'm over.
Second. There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing on October fourth to, uh, review this ordinance proposal. For the comment, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a consideration of a preliminary plat, the Cambridge Second Edition, Bruce?
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Cambridge Second Edition has been proposed by KLC of Wilmer, which is Kuzman Land Company. It's located south of Oxford Drive Southeast and west of Fifteenth Street Southeast. The plat is part of a PUD that's proposed for five fourplexes, not the five duplexes as stated in the executive summary, and then there are four additional lots that are proposed that would be splits of existing duplexes. This property is accessed off of Fifteenth Street Southeast as well as from a private street, Terraplane, Terraplane Drive Southeast. The entire plat is being, uh... street, Terraplane Drive, Southeast. The entire plat is being designed as a planned unit development, and there are additional properties around it that are being proposed to be part of the same homeowners association. And for that reason, the planning commission has approved the preliminary plat, but placed conditions on it regarding existing assessments, stormwater requirements, and private utilities, so that the entire plat and planned unit development are, end up being cohesively constructed and merged together. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the same conditions as the planning commission attached.
Thank you, Bruce. Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the preliminary plat called Cambridge Second Edition.
Question? Mr. Mayor, just looking at the overall size of these lots and the density issues, and the width of the streets, I believe these are thirty-foot streets in the planned area, correct?
Excuse me, your question again was, councilman?
Thirty-foot wide streets, or forty, or seventy-foot wide streets?
Are you talking about Terraplane Drive?
Yes.
That's a private street, and it was approved at the width as shown on the Terraplane plat.
I guess, just to comment, I'm a little concerned about the density issue here, and some of these lots only being forty-eight feet in the width of the streets, but I'll leave that into your department. Thank you.
Again, I could just remind the council that in a planned unit development, it does provide for increased densities and more efficient uses of land when there is a cohesive plan put together. And what this particular development does is combine the existing housing on Cambridge Estates, which is the cul-de-sac shown on the western portion of the plat that you see, with the proposed Cambridge Second Edition PUD, and all of these residential units will share certain amenities that are being developed around the pond and on adjacent property, such as hiking trails, outdoor gazebos, and a fairly considerable workout facility that the developer is constructing on the site as well.
Anyone else? Councilmember Doc?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, on private streets, are they built to city standards?
When the private streets are built, those plans are placed in front of our city engineering department, and they are given an opportunity to review it. If there's a street that's being constructed that is a private street, and it's near the size of a public street, and has a potential to become public at some point in the future, I know our engineering department places much stricter restrictions on the construction of that street. Because of these streets really function more as domestic driveways, those same standards would not be applied because there's absolutely no possibility of these streets becoming public streets in the future. They will always be private drives.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? The motion has been seconded. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We're down to miscellaneous on the agenda. I have one announcement here, and that, I mentioned this last time, that the League of Minnesota Cities is having their regional meetings starting September twenty-second. The closest one to Wilmer is in Grove City on October fourteenth. I would hope that some members of the council would be interested in attending. If you are, please contact Audrey Peterson at City Hall. She'll make the arrangements for you. Now, there are other regional meetings at places that are more of a distance. Audrey has that scheduled. That's all I have on our miscellaneous. Let's go to council meetings. Finance?
Mr. Mayor, the finance committee will meet on Monday, the twenty-seventh, at four forty-five.
September twenty-seventh, four forty-five, City Finance Committee. Public Works, Public Safety?
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, four forty-five.
Public Works, Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, four forty-five. Community Development?
No meeting scheduled, Mr. Mayor.
Labor?
No meeting, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that's the entire agenda for tonight. Is there any announcements from staff back there? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we'll move.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to adjourn. Before we adjourn...
Aren't we doing this?
Yes, we are. Oh, it says we should adjourn here. Okay, so the council's going to go into closed session next door to discuss wastewater treatment plan land purchase negotiations. So we would adjourn after that meeting, Rich? All right, thank you, Rich. So we need a motion to go into closed session.
So, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned and seconded that the council go into closed session for the reason I just stated. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We are done. We are done.
No, we're not.
We gotta go.
We gotta go.